Welcome back to the We Are Here Podcast, episode two. My name is Tony.
And my name is Paul. Today, our guest is David Reed, also known as Mr. Streeter, according to Mayor Bede, who was our last guest.
After the interview?
Yeah.
He is 100% Mr. Streeter.
He is. He also, that's a transferable title, but you'll find out more about that later. David is a board member to several organizations in Streeter. He's also one of our councilmen, has been in the past, but is recently re-elected as one of our city councilmen. So, and is very much a Streeter historian and has shared with us some stories that we didn't even know about. I certainly had not known about even growing up here. And so, very interesting things about our history, and also just some interesting insights into who we are and where we're going as a city.
Yeah, this was an incredible interview. I loved, I could have listened to him talk for like three hours.
Absolutely.
It was awesome. So, I hope you guys enjoy it. Buckle up. It's a good one. And we'll catch you on the next one.
Welcome back to the We Are Here Podcast. We want to thank you for joining us for our official episode two. And we're here today with David Reed. Dave, do you prefer David or Dave?
Either works. I usually go by David.
Okay, alright. So, David Reed, who wears many hats in Streeter. He's one of our newly-elected Streeter Councilman, City Councilman, and of course, is President of the Streeterland Historical Society Museum that's here in town, which I grew up, I didn't, I haven't told you this yet, but the old location, I'd love to go there as a boy and see some of the history of Streeter. And, but they have a new location, which we'd love to hear a little bit about as well. And so, we're just, again, the purpose of We're Here Podcast is to celebrate those who are making Streeter an even better place to live. And David certainly is one of those people that, that has made Streeter a great place to live and is involved in a lot of different community organizations. In fact, Mayor Bede was our first official guest, and she called you Mr. Streeter. I don't know if you would answer that on the first.
Yes, she did. She said, "Oh, Mr. Streeter."
I consider that a compliment. I think of Mr. Streeter. I think of Ed Brozak.
Okay.
A friend of mine. I always call him Mr. Streeter.
Okay.
But yeah. I think both fit.
Yeah, there you go.
But I'll take it.
So, it's a transferable title. Yeah, Mr. Streeter. So, but a very honorary title and well-deserved for you, David, I would say. So, but yeah, if you want to, if you just want to introduce yourself a little bit, tell us a little bit about yourself, your, your story growing up here in town, and you know, as a citizen of Streeter, and what all are you involved in, all of your hats?
Yeah, and I see you had asked on your, "What have I done in the past?" Well, I'll introduce myself. David Reed. I am a lifelong resident of Streeter, Illinois. Have never lived anywhere else, and I've never actually wanted to. I was born here, raised here. I raised my family here. I have two, actually, I have four children, two with my first wife, Derek, who is a research psychologist at Kansas University, and my son Alec, my youngest son, he is a platform engineer for the Imagineers at Walt Disney.
Oh, that's incredible.
That is incredible.
I don't know how he did that. He went to U of I and got a degree in business and went down there working human resources. He became a communications manager, and next thing I know, he's doing something with computers. I know what electrical engineer is. I know what civil, I don't know what a platform engineer is. But those are my two kids. I got divorced and remarried, so I have two stepchildren who I can't take credit for them. They were grown before I met them, but two great kids. And Nick writes software for State Farm, has a good job. And Bridget is an executive secretary for a country company.
Very nice. So, they're competition.
Yeah. So, those are my four kids. Like I said, born and raised in Streeter. I grew up in the 60s and 70s, which was a great time to grow up. I think anybody that's a baby boomer would say that, as Streeter's golden age, as I think of. Of course, kids growing up now would think of, this is Streeter's golden age.
Sure.
But it's definitely a different era than when we grew up. So.
Yeah. Well, you mentioned that earlier. So, we were part of a different group meeting earlier, and you said it was kind of go out and come back when the, when the streetlights come on type of thing, when the sun goes down.
Parents didn't worry about you.
Yeah, yeah, just a simpler time.
Glad you were out of the house and out of sight. But I, after I graduated from Streeter High School, I worked at Thatcher's for 10 years. They filed for bankruptcy, and I thought it was the end of the world. I got a job with Frito-Lay selling snack foods. And I loved that job, and I did that for 34 years.
Nice. And recently retired, I think?
About four years ago.
Okay.
Four, maybe five.
Yeah. So, do you feel like that's freed up some time, or is it just, how did I ever have time to work? Yeah.
I'm one of them. I thought it would free up time, but you know, time's like quicksand.
Yeah.
You scoop it out, you make a little room, and it just fills right back in.
Sure, sure. Yeah.
What I've heard that, after retirement, though, you're filling it up with stuff you want to do.
That's exactly right.
That's great.
That's exactly right.
Yeah, I like that. Yeah. So, like we said, Mayor Bede called you Mr. Streeter, and you know, that's a transferable title. But, so what are some of the, you know, we mentioned a few, city council, Streeterland Historical Society. What are some of the other organizations? Or tell us a little bit more about those, those jobs that you find yourself doing?
I've always been excited about participating in community service. I don't know why. I think it's from maybe being a Cub Scout when I was a little kid. But in 1979, I was working at Thatcher Glass. I had a coworker had just joined the Streeter J.C.s and asked me to join. And I asked him, "What are the J.C.s?" It stands for Junior Chamber of Commerce. It's a young man's leadership training organization. It's gone co-ed, but back then, it was, that's what it was billed as. And you got your leadership training by doing community service, organizing parades, things like that. So, I ended up joining for the same reason most people join, and that's to hang out with my friends and drink beer, which is what we did. I was only, what, 21 at the time? I joined the J.C.s. But I realized real soon that a small group of like-minded people could accomplish a lot if they're all working together to the same goal.
Yeah.
And I got excited about that, and I really got involved with the J.C.s. I was in the J.C.s for six years. I became the president, became the regional chairman for Northern Illinois. 1985, I joined the Streeter Lions Club. I've been a Lion now for whatever that is, 38 years, for 38 years now. I've served two different stints as president of the Lions Club, probably 20 of those years on the Board of Directors. I got involved with Engle Lane Theater.
Yeah.
Tony knows about that. I, real early on, I've been involved out there for about 40 years. I've spent 17 years on their Board of Directors, three years as president. Ran for the Streeter City Council in 1997, was fortunate enough to get elected. I served under two mayors, Mayor Bob Lee and Mayor Ray Schmidt. I was mayor pro temp for two years. 19, going backwards again, 1981, I got involved with the Streeterland Historical Society. I ran a lot of 5, 10K races, marathons when I was young, and they were having their first Heritage Days event in 1982. So, they wanted me to organize a 10K race, and I agreed to do that. So, I started going to their meetings, got involved. '82, they asked me to join their Board of Directors. And so, I've been on that board for 41 years now, the last 17 as president of the Historical Society. I got off the city council in 2001, 2005, I was asked to join the Board of Trustees of the Streeter Public Library. So, I've been on there for 18 years, the last five as president of that organization.
Very nice. Yeah.
Through my work with the Streeterland Historical Society, I got involved in the LaSalle County Historical Society, spent 11 years on their Board of Directors, three years as president. And I also ended up, of course, being over there in Utica with the Historical Society. You get involved with Burgoo. I was the general chairman of the Burgoo Festival for two years. So, yeah, I've got a long history of being involved.
And when you join organizations, you really, you're in there.
Yeah. I go all in.
Yeah. So, yeah, after all, and I just want to say, wow, I'm exhausted.
All of a sudden, I got tired. Now, I'm thinking about it. Of course, then, I was a dad.
Yeah.
So, of course, I did the Little League, and I was on the Board of Directors of the Streeter Youth Baseball. I coached soccer for six years, and I got on that board too.
You mentioned Cub Scouts, I think, Boy Scouts, yeah.
I was a Boy Scout Den Leader, coached track for six years at St. Anthony. So, yeah.
Yeah, it's fascinating.
I've been around.
Yeah. So, so, just kind of thinking about all those things, did you just kind of find yourself in the right place at the right time with those? Or was it, was it something that you felt driven to seek to be a part of this, these leadership roles, or?
Everything that I've gotten involved with, I've gotten involved with because I have an interest in.
Okay, yeah.
And I think there's a very small community of people who are the ones everybody goes to.
Yeah.
And you get out there and say, "He's active. Maybe he would be good on our board."
Right.
And that you just get asked.
Kind of that 80/20 principle. Yeah, yeah, 80% of the work done by 20% of the people.
Exactly. And my wife says, "I'm just a guy who can't say no." But she doesn't know how many things I did say no to.
Yeah, it could have been a lot worse.
It could have been a lot worse. Yeah. But, you know, I've enjoyed every board I've been on.
That's great.
And I've, I've been lucky that most of the boards I've been on, everybody has been there because they want to be there, and they're all, like I said earlier, working toward the same goal. And it's fun being part of something that's trying to make a difference.
Sure, sure. Yeah. And so, you kind of find yourself among the lever pullers, the decision-making and things like that. And so, what a great way to, you know, kind of build up organizations from the inside out, you know, and, and have that influence. So, out of all of those, those roles, you know, that you've been currently or previously involved in, how do you see that making, like, so, for example, let's say, which organization do you see making Streeter a better place? I'm sure you would say all of them, but, but what are some examples of, of how, you know, the city council is kind of an obvious one, but you know, but any of those other, the J.C.s, the library, all those things?
And the J.C.s and the Lions Club, they're similar.
Yeah.
Community service organizations. And our goal in the Lions Club is to help people less fortunate than ourselves, whether they're financially, physically, or mentally less fortunate. What can we do to make their lives better?
Sure.
You know, and some of the things we do at the Lions Club, a lot of people don't know about, you know, we organize, you know, they'll come to us, "We need a parade organized."
Yeah.
Well, we do those kinds of things. We help raise money for different things. But in 1925, Helen Keller came to the Lions and said, "You know, I love what you do as an organization, trying to make your communities better for your family, your friends, and your neighbors. But there's a group of handicapped, the blind and the deaf, who are being overlooked." And in 1925, that was the case.
Yeah.
And she asked the Lions to become Knights of the Blind. And they took up that mantle. And so, they have a special emphasis on helping the blind and the visually impaired and the deaf and, and the, I don't know what the word is, or audible, whatever, impaired.
True, understand.
Yeah, you know what I'm saying. But, you know, so we put an emphasis on that. We don't take away from the other things we're doing. And that has grown into helping people with other handicaps. And one of the, the best things I think we do for this community, and not all Lions Clubs do it, is we have a help program. And that's an acronym for Hospital Equipment Loaner Program.
Yeah.
And we have wheelchairs and commodes and crutches and all kinds of aids like that.
Yeah.
That if you need a piece of hospital equipment on a temporary basis, we will loan that to you. Unfortunately, the insurance companies make people buy them nowadays.
Yeah.
And, and it's a shame, because we have that equipment. We could give people for free.
Right.
And we find our inventory growing, because when people need a pair of crutches temporarily, they just automatically, the insurance company sends it.
Yeah.
So, they could bill them for it.
Right, right.
And then they're done with it. They give it to us. So, our inventory is growing instead of shrinking. But, but it's a very satisfying thing to belong to and to help with, because I just had a call the other day, a good friend of mine's mother just, just found out she has cancer, is going to have surgery, and, and she needed some hospital equipment just for a few days. And, and they're just so grateful to get it. And it's just a small thing you can do to help somebody.
Right.
And for the ones that do have to pay for it outside of insurance by getting it from us, that saves them money they could spend on
Right.
hospital bills or, or
Right.
you know, pharmaceuticals or whatever.
Yeah. And I've, I've seen that in action before, actually, with some, some family members who, you know, were on hospice care, things like that. And it really is a, a big benefit to, big help to, to people in need. And in kind of that moment where everything is, your whole world is rocked, you know, by, by this, this news of you have cancer or something like that, you know, things like that, then it's great to have an organization that, that is, that's right there and a part of it and willing to help, you know, lend a helping hand. So, that's fantastic.
You know, so it's, it's very gratifying when you can help people. And, you know, it doesn't make headlines or anything like that. But you know, it, it, it made a difference in their day.
Yeah, yeah. Just making, making people a little bit, a bad situation a little bit better for them. So, so how about, you know, some of the other organizations, or even if you want to talk about being a councilman, what do you, what are the ins and outs of that? What's, where do you find yourself able to make sure you're a better place?
I was just inaugurated, sworn in. I don't know what the, what the term is at this level.
Got the rubber stamp, yeah.
I was elected in April, sworn in in May.
Yeah.
So, I've only got two council meetings under my belt.
Yeah.
There's a lot of things go on behind the scenes. And I know this because I was on the council 25 years ago.
Yeah.
Everything's different. All the issues are different. The way city hall operates, the dynamics are all different.
That's what I was going to ask, is it's quite different from 25 years ago.
Well, it's, and it's the same organizational structure, but all different people now run things different. You know, the city manager has a whole different way of managing, and all the department heads have changed. I'm dealing with a different mayor.
Yeah.
And, and I, I love our mayor, Tara, and I'm glad to be serving under her. In fact, there was a big push to get me to run for mayor this year. And I said, "I won't run against Tara. If she's running, I'm all in for her."
Yeah.
But I like the way she manages as compared to the other two. Nothing against them, but they were like an iron fist kind of old-school thing. And she's, we're a team. This is what we're doing. Communication's a lot better than it was. So.
It's great.
Yeah.
It's great.
Teamwork makes the dream work.
It does make the dream work, yes.
I had to say it. Yeah, I had to say it.
Yeah, we, yeah, we say that quite often around here. But
And I'll steal it.
Yeah, please do. We stole it ourselves. So, yeah, please. Yeah. So, as far as the other organizations, or let's talk about the, the history side of things. So, you, you are someone who knows Streeter history probably better than anyone I've ever met, which I will say is fascinating to me as someone who grew up here. And, you know, I've read, the thing that comes to mind is like biography and black, you know, it's kind of Streeters' coal mining history. But I asked you this question earlier about what's your favorite era? And you said the 60s and 70s when you grew up.
When I grew up, yeah.
But then you mentioned when Streeter first started, before it was even incorporated as a city, and in kind of that process of, of how we started. So, so, first question is just, what's a, can you give us a bird's eye view of where we came from as a city? And then I've got a follow-up question. How do you think that kind of identity of who we were affects who we are today? And so, we can start with the first one if you want. I know that'll take a little bit more time, just because there's so much history to talk about, but just a bird's eye view of how we started as a city?
Okay. We virtually grew out of the coal mines.
Yeah.
I mean, literally, there was very few people here in all of Bruce Township. 1860 census had 300 people in Bruce Township. And someone sent a piece of coal to Dr. Worthy Streeter over in Ohio and said, "This is really good coal," which I didn't realize growing up, there was difference in coal.
Yeah, right.
But this is a really dense, slow-burning, clean-burning coal. Burns slow, so you don't need as much. It burns hotter, and it burns with less smoke.
Wow.
So, they sent him the sample.
I'm learning right now.
I am, yeah. Dr. Streeter was a railroad guy.
Okay.
He was a physician who made money building railroads, and he charged the Union Army a lot of money to use all his railroads during the Civil War, got very rich, and railroads need coal, because that's what they burned in the big steam engines. Somebody sent him the sample of coal, and he thought, "Well, maybe my friends, my investment friends and I can open up our own coal mine instead of buying it from somebody." And so, they were looking for somebody to come here to Central Illinois to see how much of this good coal there was. Just happened to run into his cousin, who was Colonel Ralph Plum at a railroad station.
Which is a big name.
Yeah, a big name in this area.
Yeah, yeah, that's a Streeter.
And he convinced Plum to come here and investigate to see if there is any coal and how good it is and how much there is. And Plum's answer was, "I know, you know, I've run a dry goods store for 30-some years before I went to the Civil War, and I know nothing about geology. I know nothing about construction and civil engineering to build a coal mine, but I'm broke, so I'm going to take the job." He came here, did borings. I don't know how you did borings back in them days, because there wasn't a company here to
Couldn't have been easy.
Yeah.
Couldn't have been easy. But he did it, and he realized there was a lot of coal. There's actually two seams of coal, one about 20 feet down, that's about two feet deep, one 70, 75 feet down, that's six feet deep. That's the good one, because it's older from the first ice age, and it's very compact, which makes it slow burning. And, and so, he wired to Dr. Streeter that, yes, there's more coal than we can harvest here in 100 years.
Wow.
And it is very good coal. So, Dr. Streeter said, "I authorize you to buy 4,000, up to 4,000 acres." So, he bought all 4,000 acres.
Right.
He went all the way to the limit.
Yeah.
And, and that's what started, he, I was telling him upstairs earlier, his first coal mine, he just went down to the 20-foot seam, and he only had maybe 10 employees. And he realized, it's only, you know, 300 people in all the township. How many people is going to buy our coal from us?
Right.
Now, there's only one blacksmith that would use coal on it. So, he ran a railroad from here to Winona and hooked up with the Illinois Central that ran north-south down the spine of the, and then he could get the coal out to the world
Yeah.
when he did that. Again, Plum thinking outside the box, he didn't have, he knew that the Vermillion Coal Company could afford to run that coal mine, or that railroad for his new coal mine. But he thought, "Why don't I run this railroad? And I can do what Dr. Streeter did during the Civil War. I could charge the coal company every time the train goes back and forth. I could get rich."
Yeah.
Which was a good idea, but he didn't have any money, because he just came here and he was broke, and he hadn't sold any coal yet.
Yeah.
So, he wrote to his best friend, a guy in Northern Ohio, James Garfield.
You may have heard of him.
You may have heard of him. Yeah, he went on to become the 20th president.
Yeah.
And he said, "Garfield, I've got an idea. I'm going to run this coal, this railroad track for this new coal mine, and we can charge the coal company every time the train goes back and forth, and we can get rich off of this." He said, "How about you put up all the money, and I'll do all the work. I'll, I'll do the engineering. You know, I'll hire all the help and, and buy all the land and do all the legal work and stuff." You put up, and they did come to an agreement. And I don't know if it was a 50/50, 70/30, but Garfield put up the money to run our first railroad line, which I find it interesting, the 20th president of the United States. But, and that's why if you, a steam engine can only go 10 to 12 miles on a full tank of water, because it uses so much steam to wow, move one of them trains. So, every eight to 10 miles, there's a watering station.
Yeah.
Well, Winona is 17 miles away, the, the way the tracks laid. So, he needed a station halfway, and so he named that Garfield. And that's why there's a little town named Garfield halfway between here and Winona.
Well, I'm learning more.
Because Garfield put up the money. So, I always found that fascinating.
That is fascinating. And you said earlier, you can still see the, what are they, telephone or telegraph poles, I guess?
Telephone poles.
Yeah.
Because they followed the railroad track to Winona. So, if you drive out on Main Street going west, you look to the south, you can see those poles going out to Winona.
Still kind of where that route was.
Yep. And then those poles go right down the old track.
Talk about guts. I got this idea.
You want to pay for it?
You pay for it. I'll do it.
Exactly. It worked out for both of them.
It did. It worked out. Yeah.
But we went from 300 people in 1866, when Plum arrived here. By 1868, would be just two years later, we had, excuse me, we had over 3,000
Wow.
people.
Yeah, talk about just
Yeah, by 1882, we were over 10,000 people.
Wow.
And it was all because he built the, the coal mine. And the first coal mine he built was this tiny little coal mine with only 10 people working. Once he built that railroad, he need, he knew he needed a bigger coal mine. So, he built the largest coal mine in the state of Illinois. Talk about going big again.
Nope, yeah.
This coal mine would employ 500 to 600 people, only 300 living all of
Yeah.
all of Bruce Township. But that's what brought all the immigrants. He went to New York, met the boats, handed $5 bills to anybody coming off the boat that wanted a job, brought them, you know, it brought the Italians, the Irish, the Czechs, the Slovaks, the Germans, brought all those different nationalities to this one little village, and we, we just ballooned after that.
And you said, you mentioned earlier that, you know, that, that kind of, I mean, at the time, people would care, you know, they didn't, they didn't want to be with immigrants. They didn't want to be, you know, it's very segregated as a society. And so, but, but, you know, Colonel Plum was just, he didn't, he was almost indiscriminate about it, you know, just, hey, you need a job, hey, you need a job. And, and people coming off the boat, of course, were so
Yeah.
happy to just have $5 in their pocket. And, you know, because you said that was what?
About a month's pay.
About a month's pay at that time.
Wow. Can you imagine, you're making a, a six-week journey across the ocean on this boat with, you know, a few of them had relatives already over here, but most of them were coming blind. What's going to happen when I get there? How am I going to find work? And this short old guy with a white beard handing you $5 for the train ticket. You're going to take it.
Promise of a job, yeah.
A promise that you're going to take it. So.
Wow.
That's incredible.
You know, of course, when they came here, that brought all the tradesmen, because all of a sudden, people were showing up, and there's no houses. So, builders from Ottawa and LaSalle and Pontiac already established communities saw a need to come here. Carpenters started building houses, and other trades started coming here.
Wow. And really, all the, all the resources they needed, correct me if I'm wrong, they were all kind of, you said this is a very wooded area at the time, kind of abnormal for a prairie. Illinois is mostly prairie, but, but
We had, we had a lot of timber and woods.
Yeah. So, all those resources were available right here. And so, it was kind of the perfect spot to set up a, a city like that. So.
Just, you know, because we're not really on a navigable river. There was no major roads or anything, but town grew up out of nothing.
Yeah.
Virtually grew out of the coal mines.
Yeah, that's incredible. So, then, you know, glassmaking, when did that start? You know, was that more toward the late 1800s, early 1900s?
It was in the 1880s. So, we're looking at, you know, less than 20 years after the first coal mine. 1882, we were incorporated as a city. So, I think it was about 1888 or 1889, Augustus Bush, you probably heard his name.
Heard that name before.
Was a good friend of a man named Matthew Jack. And he told Matthew Jack that he wanted to build a brewery somewhere in the Midwest. He already had one in New York. He wanted to move to the Midwest, mid, because every, you know, immigration was moving east to west. He wanted to get ahead of it and have a brewery here already. And Matthew Jack said, "Our town would be perfect for it." They wouldn't give him the land. And St. Louis said, "We've got all the free land you want if you want to build a brewery here." So, we missed out on Anheuser-Busch establishing in Streeter, Illinois. That was our first big missed opportunity.
We could have been St. Louis.
But he, but he, and, and he felt bad. He told Matthew Jack, "Sorry, I'm building, you know, on the Mississippi River where there's free land."
Right.
"But I'll give you the contract to make my bottles, if you want to build the bottles." So, Matthew Jack started the American Bottle Company. If you, if you know where the swimming pool, or the trestle right behind the old swimming pool?
Yeah.
Right on the east side of the river and just north of those tracks is where he built the American Bottle Company. And that was the first bottle factory in Streeter. He ended up buying, it was called the Streeter Bottling Company. Then he bought two more, one in Terre Haute, Indiana, one somewhere else. And renamed it the American Bottle Company. And they ended up building a second plant up on Chabanas Street. And they renamed that Owens. And that was called the Upper Works and the old plant was called the Lower Works, cause it was kind of down the valley along the river. And so they had two, two glass factories going for a while. Um, shortly after that, Thatcher's came to town. And started making milk bottles and so we had three glass factories running.
Hence the title, the glass.
And we had, a lot of people forget this, we had pane glass too, window glass. We had two, two of those. And so glass was a big thing here, because we had the silica sand in Ottawa. You had the coal right here, cause you need the furnaces. For the coal fire, you know, silica and you had the railroads. So again, it was a perfect storm.
Yeah, so, so then I guess the second part of that question then is how has that formed, or how do you see as kind of a historian seeing that form our identity today, you know, uh, how has that affected us? Obviously, immigration, the.
Well, yeah, it, it, it brought all the different cultures to Streeter. And we were very segregated. These people worked together in the factory, they worked together in the coal mine. They didn't play together outside of work. Which I always found interesting. But we had definitely a German neighborhood and Italian neighborhood. People like to live, birds of a feather flock together, they say. No fault to being segregated, but we were very segregated. But it, it created our identity, I think, because we are a, like a small America. We are a blending of so many cultures here in Streeter. And we have always been and we probably always will be considered a blue collar town. You know, we're, we're workers.
That's our roots, yeah.
That's our roots and that's our identity and I, I think that kinda gives us the reputation we have today. Uh, I, I worked for Frito-Lay and I worked all over the county. I worked in Ottawa, Peru, Mendota. And we have that reputation. Don't go to Streeter, it's a rough town. It's like, we're no different than any other town. But they had, we had that reputation because, you know, we work hard and we play hard, you know, at least we used to. Now we're just the same as everybody else, but, but we have that reputation. I don't mind it. It, it got me my job, because I was the, it, when, when our district manager for Frito-Lay was promoted from a route salesman, district manager, he had the Streeter route. Nobody would bid on the route, cause they were afraid to work in Streeter. So I was a little guy on the totem pole and I got the route, my hometown is my, my sales route.
Which you were, I'm sure, happy. That's fantastic.
There's, there's a lot of times I'll talk with someone who, who doesn't live in Streeter, but they visited years ago. You know, they maybe lived by and invariably, they say, oh, man, that's a rough town. That's real rough. I'm like, I, no, is it really? Maybe it was then.
Can't remember the last time I got in a fight.
We, we're raising two boys here and it's, I don't know, there's nothing.
It, it's no different.
Yeah, when we, when, so when my wife and I moved back, we were excited to raise our kids here, you know, because, um, I mean, it was kinda, I grew up in the eighties and the nineties, of course, but, but even then, you talked about feeling like that's your golden era, but uh, I mean, I remember riding my bike all over town and never feeling unsafe and, you know, and, and, uh, you know, it was kinda the same thing, just come home when the streetlights turn on type of thing and, and, uh, so when we decided to move back, it, I was excited about it, cause I want my kids to know that kinda small town, and of course, we lived in a much smaller town at the time, but, but, um, you know, I, I do feel like we offer uh, so much as a city without so many of the bigger city problems, you know, and, and, um, when furthermore, when people have a need here, you talked about this a little bit with the Lions Club. Um, this community knows how to come together and knows how, I think Mayor Bedi mentioned that when she was here with us, that um, that this community knows how to band together and like you said, a, a small group of like-minded people can accomplish anything. And I've seen that time and time again here, where, uh, whether it be to provide for someone who's in need, or whether it be a community event, or, or whatever it is, whatever the need is. People come together and they get it done here and, and we kinda work, it's like, we're gonna pull ourselves up by the boot, the bootstraps and.
Good, good example of that is Light Up Streeter. You know, it, we, we went through a, a patch there where Streeter was very broke. And that's right when I got elected, we, we hadn't been city manager, form of government long, but I got elected to the council in ninety-seven and it was Thanksgiving of ninety-seven when all the, the, the decorations were in bad shape. City couldn't afford to buy new decorations. So the, uh, Public Works Director decided himself, right or wrong, he wasn't gonna decorate. The city wasn't gonna decorate for Christmas. And everybody got on Ted Weber's radio show. I don't know if you guys remember Ted Weber. Everybody was on there, why isn't Streeter decorating? It's Thanksgiving weekend, you know, downtown's not decorated, the park's not decorated. And it was my first year on the city council and, and I called the, the director up and said, what's going on? He said, the stuff we've got, most of it's broken and not lit. We don't have any money in the budget. We're just not gonna do it this year. And that, somehow that got on the radio and he had told me that, that somebody called the radio and said, the city's not doing anything and it just blew up. Darcy Molo, a girl I went to grade school with, graduated high school with, she's still a good friend of mine, called me and said, is there something we can do? And I said, I said, if you wanna get some people together, yeah, we can decorate Main Street ourselves. So she called, got, she called Ted Weber's radio station, said whoever wants to help decorate Main Street. About fifteen people showed up. We took what lights people had in their houses. We decorated Main Street. Uh, that's all we did that year and then we had a small committee. Uh, it was my, my wife and I and Ed and Darcy, her parents, Dale Chevany and his wife and former mayor. And two other couples, there was, there was five or six couples. And we started doing fundraisers, raised money, uh, we decorated the park in ninety-seven. Then we realized we wanted to do the north end of the park. There was no electricity. We had to raise ten thousand dollars. Just to run electricity to the, all the corners of the park, so we could decorate the park. And it was just citizens who said, we want something better. And a small group of like-minded people got a lot done.
I love it. I love it. Like, okay, well, how, how can we help? Like, how, if we don't have the money to do it, fine, what can we do? Like, and that's, that's, that's the dream.
It is.
Like, just people saying, oh, well then, what can we do to, to do it? Let's, let's do something.
It, it's incredible to hear that. I, I'd never heard that story before. I mean, honestly, I mean, I'd known of Light Up Streeter for most of my life and.
And that's how.
Yeah, and that's, and that's how it got started, yeah, just exactly. Many hats, yeah, just another one, but.
But yeah, Darcy just, she took that idea and she ran with it and, and she had a good group of support. And look what it's grown into.
Sure, oh, yeah.
Won a Governor's Hometown Award for it.
Yeah, and, and, I, I mean, I know many times when we've, uh, when people have come to visit um, from, from out of town, they, that's one of the first things they comment about. And when, if they're here from November to, you know, what, January or even, it's not even Christmas time anymore. It's almost year round, cause I, I mean.
Yeah, they decorate a lot of things.
Yeah, yeah, I remember, uh, well, I think it was around, uh, Halloween, there were decorations, there were.
They do the pumpkins?
Yeah, Memorial Day and, and Fourth of July and all those things that are, yeah, they're, that are all, uh, they're all, uh, decorated for. And so, yeah, it's not just, not just during Christmas, but, um, yeah, I know people that have, that's, that's the thing that stuck with them when they visited Streeter was, uh, just the beauty of the park and things like that and, uh, so that's, that's incredible.
It just shows the volunteerism that we have in this community, that I know Ottawa and LaSalle are jealous of.
And Saint Louis.
You know, like Mayor, you were talking about Mayor Bedi, it's the volunteerism in this town is, is crazy. Or somebody, you're having a benefit for somebody who has cancer or something. The whole town shows up. You know, whether they know him or not. Some are doing it just, I, I wanna go out to the KFCs and drink beer, but, uh, but it's, you just wanna help. You know, we are a community, you know, the, 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 the word community. We're all in this together.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, what a, what a great, great message for anyone, you know, that wants to make Streeter better. You know, just, just find where community is happening and join in. And if it's not happening, start it, you know.
Make it happen.
Make it happen, yeah, exactly, exactly. So, uh, which, you know, is, is one of our questions, how would you call on folks in town to get involved and step up and make that happen? Um, any, I guess, you know, over this life of service and, and involvement in the community, um, maybe people are listening to this and they're thinking, well, I can't do all that David's, you know, David's done. Or, you know, I don't know where to start. Where would you tell them to start? Like, what's your advice to somebody?
If somebody wants to get involved.
They wanna get involved. Where would, what, what do they do first? What's step number one? Call you. You've got all the connections.
No, but just get ahold of anybody in your Lions Club, your Roter, your Kiwanis. You know, you've got the Fourth of July Committee, Light Up Streeter. There's just an abundance of, of ways you can be involved in your community. You know, uh, the, there's, there's the Library Board, you know. You know, anybody can belong to the Friends of the Library. You have to be appointed to the Board of Trustees. But there's an auxiliary group called the Friends of the Library. And they raise money to do things like decorate the library and they give out books at Halloween and they do a lot of, a lot of support for the library. And so you could get involved in that. Anybody can do it. All you have to do is call and, and say, I wanna help.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and check out our library, because they're, uh, almost done with the restoration.
Almost done.
So I think by the end of the summer, it should be, hopefully, after fall, maybe.
By the end of next week.
That's fantastic. Yeah, that's great.
We're way ahead of schedule.
Beautiful mural in the, the dome there, Carnegie Library, so just a little.
You know a little bit about.
I do, yeah. Shameless plug for my wife there, yeah, so.
But, you know, that's a, you talk about positive Streeter stuff. That's something that's going on. A lot of people don't know about. Is we are completely refurnishing the dome and the murals in the library. And those murals were painted in nineteen oh five by a guy named Gustav Fuchs. And you have to take your time to say that name. You don't want it to come out wrong. He's got a microphone, yeah. It's spelled F U C H. But he was a very famous artist in Chicago at the time. And he still is famous, uh, but he came to Streeter in eighteen eighty-nine. Here we go, down another.
It's fine, yeah, please, yeah.
He came to Streeter in eighteen eighty-nine to do this statue on top of the city fountain. It, you know, the, the park was a mess. They finally cleaned it up. They put in the fountain. And the, uh, the city was arguing, what are we gonna do for the top? It needs like a finial. It needs a cherry on top. They were trying to figure out what they were gonna do when a local businessman, uh, his name escapes me right now, but he showed up, he was a pharmacist. And he showed up and his daughter had died about two years earlier, three years earlier at the age of two or three years old, a little girl. And he said, I'd like to memorialize her somehow and if you let me, i- if you let me, I will pay to have her statue put on top of the new city fountain. That's all the city needed to hear, is at no cost to you.
If you let me pay for it, yeah.
And so, and, and he had money and he got ahold of this Gustav Fuchs, who came down and he did some sketches of this little girl. And they couldn't come up with anything they liked. And, you know, he did her in like her Sunday best and, you know, different things. They couldn't find anything they liked. And if you know anything about history, is that's the year, eighteen eighty-nine is the year that we got the Statue of Liberty from France. So that was all over the news and all over the newspapers and everything. And so just doodling, he drew this little girl as a baby statue of liberty. And holding the little thing up. And if you look at it, you can see it now.
I'll, I will now, yeah.
Is a baby statue of liberty. But, but that, that was his rendition of her as a baby statue of liberty. And he loved it and that's what was done. But while he was here doing that in eighteen eighty-nine, he met a Streeter girl, uh, whose dad, who was a German also, her dad ran Streeter decorating, so art, art was in there, you know, their common wheelhouse. Fell in love with her, so he was married to a Streeter girl. So when nineteen oh one, the library was started, finished in nineteen oh three, he came to see the new library. And he saw those three big arches underneath the dome. And all he saw was blank candles. Blank, so he asked permission to do that. So he drew those because of that connection. Uh, Streeter Decorating was, how do I, it was in the one hundred block of South Bloomington Street. Right south of the alley where's, uh, Streeter, uh, where Dick's Floor Covering. So if you look, it's kinda right down the alley from the library. The back of that is just maybe fifty yards from the back of the library. And so he painted them there and walked them over to the library and. And they, they've been there untouched since nineteen oh five. Which means they were very well past due for a cleaning.
Yeah, well, and they had some smoke damage, I think, from a fire that had happened there at one point.
Yeah, we had a fire in nineteen, nineteen forty-five and it was a coal fire. It had an oil furnace, not coal, oil fi- oil fires, terrible black smoke. So it did some damage to those murals and.
I'm excited to see them restored.
Finally, at, at no taxpayer expense, I, I love saying that, cause, cause everybody's like, what a waste of money. And, and, and no taxpayer expense, we figured it was gonna cost us about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do the whole scope of the work. We found several grants that all said matching grants. So we needed at least half that. We raised that through private donations and then we got the grant that doubled that.
It's fantastic. Yeah, I'm, I'm very excited to see the finished product.
And I went up and looked behind the curtain and, and they're beautiful.
Yeah, you've gotten the sneak peek, so.
Mr. Streeter should have.
Yeah, he should, absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
I'm president of the board.
Yeah, you earned that, you earned that, so, that's fantastic. Well, uh, I guess just, just a couple, um, uh, last questions, um, you know, so what do you think our future looks like? As far as a smaller community, um, you know, maybe just in general, smaller communities, uh, across the country, what do you see? What's the, I guess, what's the way forward, but what do you think is, uh, you know, good challenges, barriers to growth? What, what do you think is ahead for small communities like ours?
Well, as you probably notice, I'm very optimistic, uh, very optimistic about Streeter. Always have been. I, I still think we have some great days ahead of us. I, and I think the urban cities, you know, Chicago, Detroit, you, they're they have challenges that I hope we never see. But I think that is driving people out of the big cities and it's bringing a lot of the bad element that, that we have to deal with. But I think these communities, people say are dying out and I don't think they are. I, I think we're gonna thrive for years to come. Uh, you look at our downtown, where it is now compared to where it was twenty years ago. Uh, you have to be optimistic. We're moving in the right direction.
How many times have we said, I mean, just in our couple episodes?
I've lived here for thirteen years and downtown is completely different from when we moved to now.
And, you know, and especially that two and three hundred block. And my goal is to get the old START Committee back up. Uh, don't ask me what the acronym START stands for. Uh, but they were, it, it was a group of concerned citizens and most of them were business owners or owners of the buildings downtown that wanted to revitalize downtown. And like I said, look what they did. And that, that group kinda broke up the last few years. And one of the things I wanna do before the end of this year is get the START Committee up and running. Maybe get some fresh blood in there, get a couple of the old ones in there, say, cause you gotta have that history, what worked, didn't it? But I would like to see that progress we've made from the two hundred to the three hundred block continue to the four and five hundred block.
And even spreading north and south from there.
Go up and down, yeah, the side streets, but I, I look at the four hundred block. You know, of course, Ace Hardware is a staple of that block. But across the street, you know, you, you've got Rashids that has always been a class act. And next to that, you've got that new little, I don't know what you call it, it's got a couple boutiques, like a mini mall type thing. And you've got, uh, Tony Pettit's. And you've got, uh, Tony Pettit's, Good Morning, Good Day. I love that restaurant, it's, it's very unique.
Beautiful facade, the, yeah, the front of the building, yeah.
Everything about it, she did a great job. The only thing that she has no control of is what you see when you're sitting in there looking out the window.
Yeah.
Cause you're looking at the buildings that are just east of Ace Hardware and they are these four or five storefronts of the most dilapidated that we have.
Yeah.
And I would, like I said, I wanna get that side of, would be what, the north side?
Yeah.
Of the four hundred block cleaned up.
Yeah.
And maybe get some people in there, but I think if somehow we could raise the money, use Tiff District money or something to at least clean up the facades on those.
Yeah.
It'd be easier to sell them.
Sure.
Easier to, you know, a lot of people are saying, but the city doesn't own those buildings, why should they put money into it? Well, sometimes you have to spend money to make money.
It's that investment, yeah.
It's an investment.
Yeah, sure, yeah, you look at it as a, an investment, you're gonna multiply what you do spend on it, hopefully, so.
And i- if we can spend just a little to clean up the facade, clean up those buildings and make them saleable. Uh, so I, I, I'm very optimistic about the future, not just our town, but all small towns. You know, I, Ottawa has, always has had a vibrant downtown area, but it's, the chains are gone, they've left, it's all local owned, it's all boutiques.
Yeah.
And I like that, I, I like in, spending money that's gonna stay in Streeter, not spending it, you know, at a chain store.
Yeah, 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 some of my favorite, my favorite places is to be in town or in that area and you think about going to Moron Main and sitting and working on an afternoon, you know?
Yeah.
For me, that's, or even to the library, you know, to the library or up to the park with your family and to the splash pad, it's just, it's, it's such a nice area of town. And, yeah, I'm excited to see, see it grow and, and, uh, you know, improve even more.
I had coffee this morning with some friends at Blue Eyed Rascal.
Yeah.
And I love that place.
Yeah.
Aaliyah and her sister have really done a great job for being such young.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Started when they were in high school and, yeah, just amazing, just amazing.
But what's gratifying is when she opened was right when I retired.
Yeah.
And I sat in there a couple of times with friends and we'd be the only ones there for about an hour.
Mm-hmm.
And it was great, cause I got to know Aaliyah, got to talk to her and get to know her. But now we go, we sit there, there is a line from that counter to the door. It's just constant and it's just so.
My wife loves the place, my wife loves it.
It's just so great to see a success story, you know? And, you know, and Tony, I go, God bless her, I hope she has the same success.
Yeah.
You go in there and some days there's nobody in there, that, some days it's just packed and she's running.
Yeah.